Yeah, the board said the May meeting.
Do you believe that the building is an unsafe building and the board needs to find it accordingly?
It's, uh...I don't know if it's unsafe, but, you know, with the hole in the roof and farmers getting in and everything, I don't...I guess you would call it unsafe.
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like you're describing an unsafe building. Is that correct? Okay. So I guess at this point, counsel, would you consider this building an unsafe building?
I'll make a motion that we find it unsafe and give it 30 days to bring it into compliance.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And then finally, 416 North Newton Street. Is anybody here for that property? Hello? These times I'll have all my stuff together. Jeez Louise. Are you a Mr. Miller? Okay. So the property located at 416 North Newton Street, what steps have you taken to bring this property into compliance?
Well, the roofings are off, probably half of the wood cross pieces. The northeast corner is where the water was located that we were talking about. The way I was gonna do it isn't gonna work, so I started with chainsaw and cut a notch out of the building in that corner, and we're just gonna burn it. I talked to the fire chief, and if it's all right with you, he'd rather wait till spring because we've already winterized the pumps on the truck and, being in non-emergency, it wouldn't be worth cracking a pump out there just to sit and make sure it doesn't start anything else on fire.
How much time are you asking for?
As soon as it warms up, we can throw a match in it.
April?
Sure.
I'll make a motion that we set, uh, set it for April review.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That would be April 21st, and so you would need to be here at that time. Those are all the unsafe buildings we have for this evening.
Great, thank you. Building Inspector John, head start.
Hi. You prefer I stand or can I sit?
Your choice.
Well, I was trying to go with the flow and I thought, um, standing. So, hi, Tiffany Tigers. I am the KIRC C head start director. Uh, we have classrooms in all Newton, Jasper, and Palasca County, one of which is inside this lovely building right down the hall. And we were informed a month or two ago that our current landlord, Newton County Community Services, was no longer going to be our landlord as of December 31st of this year. Um, so I am here requesting you two, please don't kick us out of our home, and requesting that you be our new landlord. Um, I know there would be details to work out and rent and things like that, so also requesting, um, like an extra meeting to talk the details. I know we have to come back to the public meeting for approval of all those things, um, so hopefully we can have an extra meeting for that.
What rent are you paying now?
Eleven hundred dollars.
Eleven hundred?
Yeah. I would also like to request if there needs to be a rent increase, um, we are federally funded, so our budget was already approved for the fiscal year '25-'26. Our fiscal year starts in February. It's a February 1st to January 31st grant. Um, so if we need to increase the rent, it would be nice if it was kind of like extended over a timeline, like if we could start paying eleven hundred dollars a month and then make sure, like, pay, like, slowly increase it over time kind of thing, so we can build it into our budget.
How much rent was Right Steps paying?
Nine hundred. Was it nine hundred? I haven't, no idea.
And then how much were the utilities?
We only paid for our own phone, phone, and internet. All other utilities were already paid. We only had the rent payment, our phone payment, and internet.
And Right Steps? What were you, what were you paying in utilities?
They did not pay utilities.
Tina, do you know how much the utilities are for that other building?
I think they said in our meeting that it was like eleven hundred, twelve hundred dollars a month.
That's what I thought, too.
That's what I thought, too.
And do you think that was everything or just?
That was just NIPS go.
Just NIPS go?
I think they paid NIPS go water trash. Um, utility bill is around four sixty.
So they're paying about, um...
Fifteen, sixteen hundred.
Yeah, let's just say sixteen hundred, and they're bringing in two thousand. What kind of square footage are, does Right Steps and you have, do you have twice as much as they do or the same or what?
Hold on, sorry. It's in our contract. Give me one minute. I knew we needed to attend a meeting to get things formally talking, but the contract she's looking at is the one that I had attached in an email if you wanted to look it over and recheck as well. So we have two rooms, sorry, two rooms at 1,710 square feet.
That's JUDs.
Is that, is that four room or two?
Total. And then kitchen, and then we have office space. And I don't have the square footage.
Just off the top of your head, are you twice as much as, as, uh, Right Steps or...what do you, what do you three think? Put your heads together here.
Well, classroom wise, you have two classrooms, right? We have two classrooms.
Yeah.
They've got the kitchen down here. We've got the kitchen down there, and they've got, they've got a back office and a...
We have one office and we have a small break room.
Yep, and then we've got...
And you have the...
One, two, three.
Free front space, office, a storage space, and speech uses the front office.
Yeah, the very, very front corner one is...
You don't have any, are they similar?
They would be similar where the two rooms would, like, the two classrooms between the four of them would be roughly the same size. The kitchen and that end is a little bit smaller than the kitchen down here, uh, but they have more office space than Right Steps, so it would probably even out. It would be pretty close.
I think I got the idea Right Steps wanted the, uh...
Extra rooms?
Extra room, and in my mind, that made it about equal.
Well, under their current cash flow, the way their cash flow right now, that, if, if they pay the utilities, that leaves about four hundred bucks between the two of them, under their current cash flow. And when did you, when did you come up for budget review?
Our new fiscal year starts February 1st. We take our annual budget for review in September.
So, so from now, from now till September, we would want to try to set something that you could work with from now till September, and then we could talk about increases and such prior to Sep-, prior to September. Understanding the cash flow of, of an enterprise like that, as long as they took care of the utilities, I'd be, I'd be willing to settle for a rent of two hundred alpha each of them just to get us to September, and then we figure out where we go from there.
Does Right Steps have a contract review at some point? How's that work?
For budget, the budget is set yearly. It's January to December, so the budget's already completed. Um, however, I have no authority to make any of these decisions. That's why we had that special meeting. So I'm guessing we need to have another special meeting?
Well, I don't want to kill us, kill us all with having lots and lots of unproductive meetings when we could just do it now.
Sure.
Uh, and then review it as we get, you know, closer to September so that, you know, we know what we're talking about a little bit. Um, having lots of meetings isn't gonna free up cash.
No.
Who's going?
I just don't have the authority to say, yeah, that's great. Yeah, I don't want to do that.
Is that because the people in Lafayette make the decisions?
Yes.
At the, the central office?
The administration, Tammy Lynn Bloom, Reana Ryder.
And I would prefer to have the Director of Finance with me as well if we're gonna talk more details about money.
Well, and do you have to have some kind of a lease? I mean, right now you're just kind of floating, right? You don't have an active lease? I mean, right now, you're just kinda floating, right? You don't have an active lease?
Right.
So do we need to have at least a lease in place with those terms?
I think the next thing is who's taking on responsibility of the bills, of the expenses bills.
Yeah, and, and I would think that whatever lease we do, minor maintenance type things, you guys would take care of. Now, if major maintenance things comes along, obviously, then we need to get involved, but if it's a matter of a toilet valve or something like that, that's kind of a pain for our guys if it's something that you guys could do.
I think if it's a toilet thing, a light bulb, things like that are doable, but with us, since we're federally funded, we have to be careful. Whatever federal funds we put somewhere, if we can't take it with us, we can't use the federal funds for it, right? So if I, if you're making me repair a patch in the drywall, I can't take that with me kinda thing, so we shouldn't use the funds for that.
Yeah, and, and if we have to put, if we have to do a lot of maintenance, we're gonna have to charge for it. So, you know, pick your poison. Do you want high rent and we do all the maintenance, or do you want low rent and you do more of the maintenance? That's kinda where we're talking about.
Those are the things I would prefer, like, weigh the pros and cons, like, in detail, really going through, like...
In the meanwhile, from now, from now until, what, September?
I'd be okay with that.
I'd be willing to put a lease in place where it's two hundred dollars off of each one of you. And you guys equally share the...
Jim, what I think you're probably gonna have to do is we're gonna have to pick up the utilities, and then they would just pay their normal amount.
Yeah, I don't know how that works if they would separate it, like...
Because they're probably not gonna wanna take all the responsibility of the utilities and expect them to pay.
My, my only problem with that is if we're paying the utilities, they have no incentive to turn off the lights.
And we've already done our budget for 2025 for just budgeting utilities for this side of the building. And we don't have kids all year round, so we're not using as much of the electric year round either. Our kids only come August or May.
We probably have less going on now that the seniors are gone.
We're responsible for this kitchen.
Yeah.
Because this kitchen will be on our...
There's a lot of changes.
Because that's not separate from this.
So we have to pay extra for this kitchen, but if we could utilize it, there's a lot of details.
Okay. What if we said we will pay the utilities, but you continue paying the amounts that you're paying right now of four hundred of which we will consider as rent, the rest of it we will consider as utilities, transfer the utilities in our name, but if the utilities go up or down, you're gonna have to cover that.
I think that's understandable.
And then we'll work our way to September to...
And then we work our way to September.
Are the, who's, who's name are utilities in now?
Senior citizens.
And they haven't turned them off yet? Well, they probably can't because you're, they paid rent for December.
She has it scheduled for December 31st, Tricia Drain, the Director of Newton County Community Services.
Okay. So you would just have to call and transfer it effective that day?
And then you guys are gonna have to work with, with Tina every month to see where they're at on utilities and adjust your pay accordingly to cover those utilities. Because sometimes utilities will be up, sometimes they'll be down. I guess you could start an account and just continue to pay what you're paying now, and some days you pay more and some days you pay...
Tina will track that, yeah.
Yeah.
I feel like that's gonna be a fiscal nightmare for my Director of Finance. I can just hear her voice saying, oh, I'm gonna need, like, a black and white invoice, not just some floating account that covers it or doesn't cover it. And again, I'm not the fiscal guru here. I'm just trying to embrace her.
So you're saying the rent that they give us...
Will be the same.
Would cover the utility bill?
Yeah, if they pay the exact same amount they're paying now, both of them.
Right.
They're, between the two of them, they're paying two thousand dollars.
You'll pay all the utilities, and whatever's left, you'll divide it up between their rent and consider that their rent for the month.
Four, a minimum of four hundred dollars would be the rent, and then, and then the rest, the balance, then would be, go towards the utilities.
And maybe instead of doing it monthly, maybe you keep a cumulative total, and then when we revisit it in September, if there's, you know, extra money because they didn't use all the utilities, we could credit that toward their rent coming up, but then that way it's not a monthly thing, because I think that would be a nightmare to try to...
I get that.
Or, you know, give them a check or give them a bill in September for overage.
What we're trying to do is demonstrate that we're willing to work with both, both of you.
And I appreciate that. I just didn't bring all the right people to this meeting.
And then if we could get our erstwhile attorney to write up that confusing mess and...
I, I was taking copious notes.
Mallory will make, uh, make some kind of an agreement and, and document this and memorialize it, and...
Sign it up for review. Everybody can take a look at it.
Yeah, and we move forward.
So we need to...
You're saying you want an eleven hundred dollar check from me for January 1st, right? Because I paid December rent, so I would owe you January rent.
Yep.
So, and where would the check go? Would that be in what she writes up?
Yeah.
Yeah, go to Tina.
All, all money.
Go with Tina's name on it, then.
Although she would love that.
Yeah.
All money goes to Tina.
Okay.
None of it goes anywhere else but Tina's.
So the rent would remain the same, and then, just tell me one more time, what would happen?
So the rent's gonna remain the same. Tina's gonna pay the utilities, and she's gonna keep track. If utilities go over sixteen hundred dollars a month, you guys have to cover that difference.
So, so the bottom line is all you're gonna do is pay the regular. Tina's gonna kinda keep track. In September, though, as their budget goes, we're gonna hope to get the utility money back. We're gonna hope to be able to get the rent back to where it is, and you guys paying utilities. So in reality, we're probably looking at eight hundred or nine hundred dollar a month increase for September is what we're hoping for.
Per agency?
Yes, that's not given, but that's just an, an estimate based on all the stuff we're talking about right now. And we'll be able to know that once we're paying utilities this year, Tina will get an idea of what the utilities are, so then we'll be able to better judge that in September.
Is there a way, like, are the utilities just that half of the building versus this half of the building? Or is it broken down by, like, room or space?
Half and half.
For water and...
And you can, I mean, you can call NIPSCO and ask them what the monthly average is over the last 12 months for that meter or that space for gas and electric, and they'll tell ya. I call them all the time for averages.
It was thirteen hundred dollars a month when Breanna reached out, but I don't know...
How long ago that was, or...
When that was, like, whatever. I, I know that it's around that amount. I also know that the, the thermostat was moved to the hallway. And we've talked about a lot of the vents. Tina had mentioned she thought that Butch used to have a tool that adjusted the vents from inside the vent because it's freezing on the end with the offices, and it's a million degrees. And I, I mean, it is a huge difference, but, like, we've tried to adjust the vents. Case and Dustin have tried, right? And I don't know how to help that at all. But I've never seen anything up inside of these.
It's just, it's just a screwdriver you stick up there and you open it or close it. And I went around, we put in a new air conditioning unit.
Yeah.
I went around and opened up every single vent, and then for the next week, every single morning, I'd show up and check the temperature in each room and just dial them down accordingly to where every room looked the same.
Now, does that change, though, when, with heat?
It shouldn't.
Maybe we can shut our vents in the office area. Like, really, it's, it's super cold in there. And if you come in there, like, and I know that the sun plays a part, but...
Well, but this time of year, if it's cold in there, you wanna open those and dial down the other ones, close...
Yeah, because you...
This was in the heat, so now, I don't know, because I just turned the furnace on. We don't run it unless we have to.
It all runs in the same system, so it should be mostly the same. It would, it should flow the same.
It's the summertime that it's real cold in the office, but it's hot down there because the sun is coming.
Well, that's where, yeah, you need to dial the ones in the office down.
Yeah.
But then in, but then in the wintertime, then, when you're using heat, then you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to make that the office.
Open ours up and close them down.
But not close, close, just...
Right. Adjust the...
I will say, I think some of that got really screwed up with, with the seniors in there, because they had that case board heater in there. And they were running that all the time, and I think they might've screwed up some things, because they had that thing rolling heat all the time.
It's so hot.
Okay.
Even in the...
So that might make a big difference if we turn that off. Like, you can't turn it off, but I mean...
Turn it down if you're not using it. They're not using this space.
You know, fifty-five.
It's finally fixed, well, it's got fixed two months ago or whatever, so it can actually run again, but the temperature, I believe, has been... It was turned down by the time I was in there.
Yeah. Okay.
We will find something that will work for everybody. Everybody might have to endure a little pain, but we'll find something that'll work for everybody.
Yeah.
And I appreciate the grace period of September, so we've got more time and you're not kicking us out in the winter.
No, we're not gonna kick you out.
Yeah, we don't wanna kick you out.
You, you provide, both of you provide a valuable service for the people of Goodwin, and we wanna keep that, and so we'll try to help you. Okay? Is that it? Financials, Tina.
So at the end of October and March in general, we ended with three hundred and thirteen thousand, three hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-three cents. Water operating, sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ten cents. Sewer operating, forty-five thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven dollars and ten cents. Trash, thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and eighty-six cents. And which is the grand total, one million, eight hundred thousand, five hundred and seven dollars and eighty-eight cents.
It's time to make our first payment back to Newton County Economic Development of forty thousand dollars. And Tim has told me that he's going to try, once we make two payments, he's gonna try to get the, the council to forgive the rest. But Tim's leaving it at the end of the year, so he's just gonna, you know, he can, all he can do is make that suggestion and see how, see where it goes. He'll be gone when it's actually time to implement that suggestion. Anyway, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and pay the first installment back to Newton County Economic Development of forty thousand. Out of the account that is probably setting in right now. When we got a hundred and twenty thousand.
Right, so just take it from that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do you have a fire department report, Tina?
I do. Do you want to read it or you want me to? Since our October council meeting, they had 12 fire calls, 10 EMS calls, two mutual, two fire mutual aid calls out, one to Brook and one to Kintland. One Kintland volunteer fire department member will be graduating Fire One and Two Academy in early December. Five members have been scheduled for Fire One and Two Academy in mid-December, early January. Two department EMR have been enrolled in Emergency Medical Technician Academy starting in December. Curpsy and the fire chief have been finalizing the grant application and process to secure a grant through FEMA for new pumper and/or pumper slash taker combo that will upgrade the department and replace the 1984 pumper. Officer elections are scheduled for this evening at the fire department, and upon conclusion results, an updated roster will be forwarded to the council and the town clerk's office and dispatch. Breakfast with Santa, as well in the final stages of being ready for December 14th at the fire station from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. for a large variety breakfast and festivities and toy raffles and giveaways. The donated ambulance from Homeland Security to the fire department has been evaluated by the medical orders as worthy, and the process of cleaning it up and decal measurements have been underway, and certain upgrades in getting unit ready for service with the department as a medical non-transport unit, a rehab unit on fire scenes, and a support unit to the fire department, and will serve the town and department as an emergency vehicle asset. The title and such will be forwarded to the town clerk's office accordingly for place and insurance arrangements with no major increase in the budget cost of insurance coverage. That's it.
That's it? Any discussion of fire department? Police department?
We had forty-one calls. Fourteen were handled by the county and fourteen by us. Thirteen were public safety. Seven of those, I handled seven, the deputies. No arrests, three warnings, three tickets, and seven ordinance violations.
Is that it? Anybody have anything?
All my in services, state mandated in services done and turned into the state for the year.
Anybody have anything for Dylan? Street, water, and sewer.
So for streets, the alley between the Public Works Building and Miebelarta has been painted no parking. Just on the west end of Miebelarta, there was a lot of people parking almost straight or on an angle. And that's gotta be a through alley through there, so we made sure there's signs for no parking. And they also spray painted four parking spots in front of our building, so it's clearly marked where we should park. We are working with Ken Smith on roads to be paved for the January community crossing grant application. Downtown Christmas banners and lights will be installed after Thanksgiving. For sewer, Gail Anderson has finally completed the repairs on the Influent and Stream Flow Meters located at the wastewater treatment plant. They waited months for the parts back from the manufacturer just to get it repaired and back, and as soon as they got it, it came right to us, so everything ended up running and has been for the last week and a half. So... For water, we have repaired another spot on the four-inch water main that goes between Union and 24. This time it was on the south end of the tracks. We will be repairing the water leak at the ball field, or we'll be getting a new water line, which is down here later in the parks. We'll be installing a new service line at 306 South Benton tomorrow. That is in conjunction with Ward Excavating. He's got a real bad service line in there, so he's gonna be fixing that. We have repaired a chemical injection line at the drinking water treatment plant. And we have purchased the siding for the drinking water treatment plant for the repairs on that one peak that's been blown off. We had a contractor line up, and he never showed up for the job, so we're just gonna do ourselves. For parks, we are still waiting on a quote for the boring for the sewer line, just so we don't kill that tree that's right there next to it. We have winterized the ball field. We will be obtaining quotes to run a new water line to the ball fields, and we have purchased materials to repair and replace the railing on the busybo at Foster Park. And that's all I have.
When you say railing, there's that, that lattice work also?
Yeah.
The ditch that crosses South Newton Street. I was hoping to get the brush out of that before spring so it doesn't impede any flow and cause any flooding in that part of town. You guys, can you guys get that done?
I know Dustin's been in talks with some people to get it done. Pretty much everything's fallen through, but we'll, we'll take care of it.
Anybody have anything for Case? Attorney, Mallory?
Uh, yes. Judd did not give me much to report tonight, except for he had been in the last week in email communication regarding the Bright Speed, um... Fiber. Fiber and discussions about that. So he provided me a copy of that email, and essentially, he just wanted me to talk with the council tonight about possibly putting in place an agreement with the company to set up certain parameters that if they need to cut into any rights of way or into any streets, bore up under any streets, that there would be parameters of what they'd have to reimburse the town for. From review of the file, it looks like you guys had done something similar back in March with Surf Air Wireless, and so I guess we would probably just suggest to do something similar with Bright Speed, and if the council would approve that, I would go back to and report that to Judd that we would do, move forward with that.
Works for me.
Works for me.
Awesome. Sounds great. That's all I had.
That's it. Anybody have anything for Mallory? Says sewer adjustment, but I don't see anything. Yeah, for Jill, Jill Cornell?
He didn't bring it in. I made the gym down at the time, so maybe next month.
He didn't bring it in. I made the gym down at the time, so maybe next month.
Okay. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to discuss with council?
Look at all these hands.
Okay, I'm with you.
Um, I was just curious if I could take it upon myself or work with the town to maybe do solar light Christmas decorating around the pond. I mean, I know kids may wreck it, that's fine. I mean, it's not something I would probably get one. Hopefully this year, it would be something I would maybe build up over the next year or two.
What do you mean, solar lighting?
So there's Christmas solar lighting. It's just got the solar panels, so it all runs off of the, the sun and the light.
So you'd put them...
So I wouldn't have to worry about any electricity or anything.
So you'd put them out for Christmas and you'd take them in after Christmas?
Yep, and I would store them, so the town wouldn't have to store them or anything.
I'm good with that.
Yeah, I'd be okay with that.
Yep, that'd be wonderful.
Okay. And, um, the cat problem that we had, I think it was addressed at the last meeting. So I am working with a lady that lives here in town. She works for the Four Precious Pals Low Cost Faid Neuter down in Lafayette. Um, it is sixty-five to get an outdoor cat fixed. And it's a hundred and ten to get inside cats fixed. And I can work with her helping other people to combat the problem with the strays. So...
So we just need to get that word out? Is that, what's that, what you're telling us?
Yeah, mainly, yeah. And I can send Tina or, uh, her, um, yeah.
There.
Like, information and she can put it on the website or whatever, if that would be okay?
That'd be great.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Did she give you permission to do that?
Um, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
That's my daughter.
I'm just curious. Yeah, well, we're just trying to combat the problem, because nobody else in the area is willing to help. And so...
Yeah, and I'm fine with that, is they're just not gonna live in my garage.
No, 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 no.
She's bringing them to your house.
I'm willing to take them in after...
Outdoor.
Yeah, after they get fixed, they come and they stay in my garage and then we'll release them back in their area. They'll have like a clip on their ear that shows that they've been fixed and everything. So this is just to prevent more babies, because one, one male and one female, she can prevent five litters in one year. Yeah. So it can escalate extremely fast. So, no, they'll be at my house. No, you're good.
Just curious.
Yeah, we've already done several. Yeah, yeah, she's done several for me already. I've already got four of ours down by the pond, um, taken care of. Um, she's gonna do two more this coming week. She's doing one of my inside cats as we speak. So, I mean, it's, it's a good service to have, because it is costly. I mean, just to have them done at the vet is three hundred plus.
Okay.
So...
And it's free transportation.
Yeah, yeah, and I'm gonna give her, yes. I've been giving her extra for gas, 'cause, I mean, it is, you know, she's doing a great service for us.
It is a good service.
And they, they are doing a wonderful job down there, too, so...
Okay, Dave?
When I first moved in that house, we got paper from you about the water line going underneath the garage.
Yes.
Like, two, three years ago. I'm not hurt anything else by it. I will look. I want to get gravel put in my driveway eventually here next, from now until summer.
Okay, that's the water line that, for the ballpark, that Case talked about earlier. We wanna give him, give him the details, what you're planning there?
So we have an easement in between your property and the property to the north, and that's where the new water line would run. We haven't really decided yet if we're gonna bore it or if we're gonna open dig it.
But, but it wouldn't go under his driveway? We're gonna abandon the one that's under your driveway and put in a new one in this new region?
I think the sewer's there, too, so while he's doing water.
Looking on that, 'cause it, it might go, it might go north to, we've got a manhole in like the corner of, over by our water treatment plant.
I, I guess I, I was thinking it did, so when we do that, we'll wanna bypass the sewer if we're digging the water line.
No, for sure. I'm not griping or anything, I just haven't heard anything about it.
I think you can gravel your garage if you want to, because it'll be our intention to...
To not go under your garage.
The next question was, if it was the meters I ran at the end of my driveway.
Yes.
When I put gravel on, I will need, I'll need a lid.
Like a razor.
Razor.
A razor ring?
But if you're gonna move it...
Is that the meter at the end of his driveway for the ballpark, or is that for his house?
Yeah, no, it's...
That is for the, it's a bigger meter. We hadn't talked about putting a new tap in, so we would probably be using the existing meter bit. And like I said, that is a bigger one, and we don't have any rings for that one. We'd have to get, get one on order.
Just let you know when I'm ready.
Yep. Yeah.
I was wondering, but we have, I haven't heard anything else about it. We gotta start to give you the, okay, maybe whatever we need.
John, why don't you go do something with all the dead trees in the pond?
Didn't we approve those to be kept?
I...
Didn't we approve those to be done?
We had mentioned something about it. I don't, I don't believe any funds were ever approved for it.
Yeah, I think we approved that. I think we had an estimate even that we approved, didn't we?
I don't remember about an estimate, but we approved, I could go back to my minutes and look.
We've, I, we've never had Wiseman there to look at those trees, but there are quite a few dead ash trees on the west side, um, in that ditch line and the other are...
I thought we approved funds for that.
One falls down in every one, so we need, we did.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's a leaning one now. It was out the window, it was like, oh.
I'm afraid to drive under there, since the church is gone, I have nothing to protect me.
I thought we approved, like...
I remember talking about two sewers.
Oh, yeah.
Get them going.
Okay.
Yep.
I'll, uh, we can call Wiseman and get them in here.
We need to get the tile picked up down at...
Yes, we do.
At, at our June meeting, they were supposed to get quotes.
June?
At our June meeting.
Okay. Okay.
Blame it on the ball.
Yeah, blame on Dustin, he's not here.
Does it say the amount or no?
No, it just said you're supposed to get quotes.
Okay.
I'd like the council to entertain the possibility of painting a pickleball court on June fourth and possibly having open pickleball for people one day, like maybe on a Sunday. Currently, or this past winter, um, Kintland did it at the community center. And, um, we drove over there, um, to play pickleball. And it was really nice during the winter, it was just on Sunday. And, um, they just left the doors unlocked and who was there first got to support and anybody else had to wait. We were there early enough each time that we never had to wait. But, um, it was, it was very nice. It's a nice entertaining thing to do during the winter and exercise-wise, so if the town might consider putting it there.
Who does such a thing?
Who plays pickleball?
No, who paints?
Who paints, yeah, who would paint?
Um, gosh, I, I don't know. I know there's a company out of Lebanon, um, that actually puts in pickleball courts and paints, but I don't know. I, I have no idea who painted it over there, whether they did it themselves. Because you can look up, you can look up the, the court size and everything that needs to be done legally on a, on a pickleball.
Well, and they might have even who did theirs. I wonder if we reached out to somebody in Kintland.
I just think it would be good for the community, you know, type thing, so to, to have open gym where, where it's specifically for that. I mean, you wouldn't want an open gym for basketball players than your pickleball people could play, so it's just a thought, you know?
Only concern I would have is, at least in the wintertime and when there's bad weather, they've got the gym for recess for the kids.
Only during the day.
Only on Sunday. Yeah, I'm only talking Sunday.
Oh, okay, yeah.
I'm just talking Monday.
Times two, like, ten to two.
So if we did something like that, we'd have to have somebody who's going to unlock it from ten AM until two or two to six.
And sort of be the...
Kind of over...
Yeah, over at, at, at Kintland, I believe it's an automatic. It's a timed tight locking mechanism. It, we just, we just show up and, my understanding is a timed one, 'cause my husband, 'cause one time it wasn't unlocked and he called and they said, yeah, I didn't, he didn't like it, it was special. So, I don't know, but, um, it's just a thought.
Yeah, I would kinda like to have somebody sort of oversee it a little bit, just so we don't get people coming in here and ripping the place apart.
Put your hand up, Dan.
You gonna do that, Tim?
Why can't you do that? I can't really, I can't say I'll be here on Sunday, unfortunately.
What if, um, what if there's a volunteer basis, that there's somebody available to come in on the Sunday? And just put it out on the page that...
Better get it out there.
Scheduled for the Sunday open.
Well, if, uh...
But then we have to get on the key.
If someone could put in some research to find somebody who would be willing to paint the thing and find out what kind of cost we're talking about.
That'd be a starting point.
Yeah, bring us some data, I'd, I'd certainly...
And so you can tape it, too. You can use tape. You wouldn't necessarily have to paint it. It could be taped.
Are there bleachers in the way, or it's, I don't know, play pickleball?
It would, it would be, it's not, it's not as good as a tennis court. In fact, we put two pickleball courts on one half of a tennis court.
Oh?
Side by side. So they're smaller. They're actually smaller, so. On one tennis court, you could get four pickleball courts.
You could probably get two of them in the gym.
Oh, yeah.
And I know the net, I mean, we have our own net, so we, we bring our own net, but they're only like ninety dollars. Between ninety and a hundred and twenty dollars to get a standard.
If someone wanted to take the initiative to find somebody to do it and, and tell us what the costs and such are, I'd, I'd be in favor of it.
And hopefully by next spring, we'll have outdoor pickleball courts.
Yeah, that's what I'm hoping for, too.
Yeah. And, and we are looking at that. We got some absolutely ridiculous quotes on...
Well, like I said, there is a company out of Lebanon. I, I can probably get the name of that company. They do, that, that's just what they do.
Do they, do they pay? 'Cause we need to repave our...
I think they put in the whole thing. I think they take it all out and put the whole thing down.
We, and we had, we got that quoted for the old tennis court up there, and it was pretty steep.
It was something wild.
It was like in the seventy thousands.
That was to rip it out, and then I got another one for twenty...
You did get a second one?
Twenty-two, twenty-four, but only from Brookston.
So, yeah, if somebody wants to take the initiative, then bring us, bring us something we can, we can deal with.
Okay. Okay.
Anybody else have anything they want to discuss?
Hi, you.
Mira. Mira.
I have a couple of other events. Uh, Tina already talked about breakfast with Santa with the Goodland Volunteer Fire Department. But we also have Grinchment's, Grinch-ness Extravaganza by the Curious Life Assembly of God Church located at the Town Hall Gym, bring the whole family to enjoy fun Grinch-themed crafts and games and a free chicken and noodle dinner on December fifteenth from two to five PM. And then also meet Santa at the Goodland Library. More details to come on their Facebook page. And that's going to be on December twenty-first from one to three. That's all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Were there any questions or anything on, during the meeting? Okay. Well, that concludes our matters on the agenda. I wish everybody...
I just had one more thing. I'm sorry, is that a tag? Um, this is more of a complaint than anything, and I hate to complain. The alley behind our house is a speedway, and I don't know how we could stop and slow people down. Because we have a lot right behind us. We're out there walking across quite often. We've walked out of our garage and there'll be cars that fly, fly past. And we don't even, I mean, we try to pay attention, of course, but I don't know if we could put in speed bumps. I don't know, but it's, it's ridiculous how fast people fly down that alley.
Do you know who it is?
I don't, because when we watch them, they go to the end of the alley and they turn left to right and they're gone. I don't even know why they're going down the alley. It's not like they're living on it.
Oh, so it's not anybody that...
I, I don't, I can't, I can't determine what, what, you know, what's going on, because we try to watch and, um...
Is it all times of the day? Is there like this particular, like a particular, is it like after work or after school?
I walk during the day, so I'm not, I'm not home during the day, but on the weekend, it's all, all times during the day.
Which alley is it?
Which alley? It's right behind, between Newton and James. Yeah.
Is it always the same car?
No, several different cars. It's, uh, we've seen a silver van, um, that goes quite fast. We've seen some SUVs. I, I can't tell you. I mean, it's not John Myers. Of course, it's not John Myers, you know? Um, and it's not Ryan, uh, Luttrell. It's not him. He, he drives normal. It's not the people that live inside Joanne's house. It's not them. It's not anybody that I can tell.
So that narrows it down to Jen and Mary Jo.
And it's not them.
I mean, is that something that we can get some extra patrol? I mean, I think it really only takes you write one ticket and people get the word and, and...
It's just, I mean, you know, I've said that before, how, how bad it is.
What's the speed limit on an alley?
Hot, what is it, ten mile an hour? I don't know. I don't know what the...
I don't know.
I'm sure there's an ordinance that we have for the town for what our speed limits are on our streets and in our alleys.
I mean, there are some little girls that live there and there's kids playing in the area. I just, it just concerns me. And my husband doesn't hear so well, so sometimes walking out of the garage, he might...
Okay, this is a little bit off the wall, but would it be possible to make it a not-through alley? So the people that live on the north end and have to go out the north end, and the people on the south end have to go out the south end? And there's something blocking the middle of it, so you can't go through?
Nah, I think that might erate some other people on both sides. I, I mean, Dawn and Terri Lee use it to go all the way through, because of their pulling, pulling their trailer and everything. And I would hate to block that for them, because that would be a pain for them to have to back their trailer all the way out. Um, and when we have our trailer, our camper there, we go all the way through to the other end, so... And, I mean, John comes all the way through. And again, I don't have a problem with that, with people doing a normal speed limit. They're, they're flying. When they fly, they're throwing gravel. It's not like they're not throwing gravel. I wonder if it's the high school friends.
Is there a way to do a, to put up a speed bump over gravel?
See, that's why I'm wondering, if you could put a speed bump in there anywhere that would slow it down.
With gravel, it wouldn't last very long.
What about with some of that, is that, is that...
That's hard.
It's hard now?
Yeah, they dumped it again, after we told them specifically.
What about those black ones that are like rubber, or they're made out of, can you buy some of those and just anchor them?
Sure we can. Yeah, you know, I don't know. Yeah. It's, it's just, it's just a little dangerous sometimes. It, it could be. So, and like I said, I don't wanna block it for, for people who are using it and using it properly. But we do see people come all the way through and turn and go left to right and not even stop and be flying down through it. So, I don't know. It's just something to consider.
I mean, I think extra patrol's not out of the question initially.
You, you try to patrol it, and then maybe when we do some paving, next time, we could build some speed bumps.
I can wreck Dustin's ring tomorrow and...
Or price those, I don't know, they're some kind of a hard rubber or something. I don't know what that...
Do the alley, you just... Put a speed bump in it, turn two of them.
Yeah, it might even take more than one.
Yeah, like two. Kind of, I, I don't know. I mean, like I said, we use it, but we try to be really conscious of it.
Make grading, make grading a lot harder.
Put in a chicane.
Yeah, that might help. That might help. So that, that's it. I, I hate to complain, but I, I'm just, it just seems to get worse.
Okay, anybody else? Wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
You as well.
And I make a motion we adjourn.
Second.